I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please, Father Gens? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for all the gifts that you give us. We pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that we can make decisions on behalf of our citizens and represent them well. And we just thank you for the moisture that you have given us as of late. We pray that you watch over those farmers that have had destruction out there, that they can see some light at the end of their tunnel. In your name we pray.
Amen. We need an approval of minutes from August 7th, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Weidrich. Second. And second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of those minutes, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, agenda. Prove the agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Pillar. Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor of this agenda, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Agenda is set. Five A, engineers report. Jared?
Alright, so you should have a copy of our report for the month, but generally, I'll just start with the water system project. As always, you have three contracts going on up there. The tank, the end tanks is done, the tank. So, we've paved them. They're out of town. We still have two open contracts up there, one for B&amp;G Electric and then one for Tanned. The B&amp;G Electric contract is still open. They have a light to adjust up there, it was a nuisance area, remember we brought that up a few months ago? They'll be back here this fall. There's also a light pole to put up up there, but we're very close to finalizing their contract up there. So they'll be done soon. And then Tanned, generally just miscellaneous items to do. If you recall, we intentionally left their contract open, so we could add some asphalt patching, some concrete repair work. Winkler has done some of that. Quality asphalt is gonna be back in September. They're finishing up some work in Wilton, and they're planning to come here afterwards. So, that work, and no payments, just an update basically telling you, that's what's happening. On the periphery, if you have asphalt needs, some little things, and we've been told about some little things around a few inlets that have kind of settled and shifted, there's a dip on Main Street with that service signs put in for West River. Some little things we should probably do at that time. These guys asked us to get a quote for that work, so we can route that to you. If you want to have that quality asphalt do that at that time, you can. But, they'll probably be coming in this week, and I don't expect those to be large things, but they're here, might as well have to do it. So, that's where we stand, any questions on the water system project? No? Okay, alright. Expedition Estates. Expedition, I mean, Williams Building Company's doing the work themselves, they've been out of town for quite some time. I understand you guys are issuing building permits up there, which is fine, you can do that. You just, you know, don't want to issue any certificates of occupancy until those sewer and water repairs are done, but they'll be back. It looks like they're restarting their work on August 28th. Their intention is to fix all the sewer water subgrade issues this fall, and then just have a gravel surface for the winter. Again, that's fine, they'll be paving everything next year. So, any questions on those? No? Okay. There's plenty of testing to do when they're done, but for the most part, we've been doing compaction testing. Everything's at the right moisture percent, it's at the right compaction. Good things to say about them, so that's been going fine. Union State Bank Alley. You guys know where that is, attach the copy of the task order 15, but you guys create an improvement district, which is the limits of the alley. At the last meeting, the next step is, oh no, you didn't, I'll do it now. Oh, I'm sorry. Create the improvement district, direct the engineer to prepare a report, approve the report, resolution and necessity. That all passes, then prepare lines of specs. So, this is our, I'm asking for a task order to do the topographic survey and the engineering report. Basically, we would split that into three parts. The alley, if you go on the map, Monty, I'll just show them. So, I kind of see it as three parts, there's the alley, which is the public thoroughfare, you know, benefits to some people. You guys suggested at the same time, we look at these parking areas kind of on the edges, and then the city-owned parking lots. What I would suggest, sorry, go ahead. Suggest is we'll do a topographic survey of the whole thing, and we'll come back to you with a report next week, which is a, or in two weeks, which is a cost estimate, recommendations for how to resolve those things. And I would, I'll separate it into three parts, so it's alley, parking on the south side, and then parking on the north side, so you guys can make some considerations at that time.
So the alley is in, the alley going up to the north there, that's identified in that particular boundary. What's, what's happening there?
I just was gonna have the survey crew survey it when they were here, I guess. What do you think, you want to stop without doing that part?
I don't know. Is that all concrete as it is now?
Going north.
Going north?
No. If I remember right, that's gravel alley, going north.
I guess I don't, my, my concern maybe, is that if that's considered part of that district, if you will, and then there's, there's some residents' properties that touch that upper boundary, I see virtually zero benefit, and I know our special assessment group could, you know, have some conversations. But, my concern, if I were a resident up there is...
Like the last alley you did?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no to this thing, and it could invariably, you know, help cancel that project, if, if you will. So I just didn't know what your intent was on that vertical piece there in the alley.
I had a good much thought of it, I, I just circled it.
So that, does that go all the way up to the, the east-west street then? Okay. So you were, you were basically setting the boundaries from the west side out there on that center of that street, to the center of the street, and then up the alley to, so.
I don't know how the rest of the group feels, but I guess when, when I'm looking at that, I don't see value on going north on that, that alleyway there.
You're right, the last time we did the one, we just, we didn't, we didn't do that tee part of it, we just did the straight through. So, if you want, I'll just limit it to the straight east-west alley, leave that out.
The only, the only part I would think would be beneficial, it'd be between the city's parking lot and Union State Bank's auto bank.
Yep.
Right there.
And I, what my thoughts is, right there where Monty was wiggling back and forth, that might be an appropriate line up for us.
Yeah, dude, I'm gonna say that, except I've been down that alley, and that north one, I didn't even know that that was an alley. You know, it's kind of like overgrown, it's kind of smaller, it's not...
When, when you guys look at that, Jared, from the, the central avenue, all the way to the, between the edge of the bank there, on the west, the west side of the bank, right there, that, that concrete's all in really good shape.
For this first, yep, all the way to that point.
Yes, yep, and then, yeah. You know, so I, I would hope that that wouldn't be torn out, or, or you go with that, but...
What I, my goal here is to survey it.
Yep.
And, there's a whole bunch of water sitting in the parking lot here, and I think we're probably, we may want to put a storm inlet back there, because the water's sitting here and here, and so we'll survey it, come up with a little plan, and if it takes the storm pipe and an inlet, so be it, but I can't really tell you that until I do some survey work out there.
And that portion up there, Jerry, that's, that's a city parking lot?
Yes.
Right there, that shaded area?
Yep.
Okay.
So the, the thought behind the, of the little spots behind the businesses, that is not gonna be, that'll be individual business. If they want add-on to this part, that's gonna be on their time, and not...
I thought this middle one looked fine, like too, as long as it, as long as it all like, we surveyed it and ties in fine, then I would just leave it alone.
But, in so, we'll, we'll call that a, a district, but for those portions, you guys in your estimations or whatever, will single those things out, so each of those businesses would have the opportunity to say yea or nay to that add-on.
Yep.
But they, so, so they may say no to the add-on, but they might still support the alleyway. They would have that capability of doing that as owners?
Yep, yep, so it'll come back as a map, and it'll have blue, green, red, or whatever for the different costs, and then I'll, we'll try to break it down of what each individual person's gonna pay. And then we'll have to let them each know, so they can either protest it or not. I don't know if you want to do a petition for it, or if you want to do the protest for it.
I just want to make sure that when we define this project and break out the monies and stuff like that, that by how we defined it, it's not gonna put one of the business owners in a position where they say, well, I was hoping to just get this part done, and I don't want to spend that much more money if there's the flexibility and how it's broken up and everything, so.
Okay. And just be aware, when it comes back, you know, you guys own the parking lot, so that'll be assumed city cost on there. Probably some of the alley too, because the parking lot borders some of that alley too, so just be aware of that. Okay, so, I'm asking for approval of task order 15, which is the attached, you know, to your report. Says that we'll survey it and prepare basically what you said, and so the cost of that engineer's report is $6,500.
And that, also included in that would be the redefining of that, that district, the way that we talked about some of those things tonight? Or do we tell you what we want the district to be, and then you start doing all of the engineering on it?
It would include doing the, so the, the district boundary, engineer's report, which is the, the cost has been broken down for property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So I would make a motion that we provide authorization to more engineering to do just what Jared discussed tonight, with that cutting out of the northern portion of that alleyway there, just going horizontally across from the north boundary of the city parking lot.
Motion by Pillar.
Did you get all of that, Monty? Second?
Second by Stern. Discussion. Jared, when you guys do your survey, I, I know the owner of Home Connections is pretty concerned about, we've got like a little bump out in the back of the building there, it might have been at one time, a coal chute or something, and that's...
Figure out what's going on.
Been a hindrance and water issue, and I know that one, even like snowing a little, and there's...
I don't know which one it is.
Yes. Now, I can't see here, but it's right...
Is that where that shed is back there?
No, it's, it's right back here, actually, yeah, right, right as well, where his cursor's at.
Okay. We can see where it is.
Yeah, yeah, it's about that high up the ground of the block.
Yeah, that, yeah. Well, we're doing main streets and towns, we run into stairwells and window wells, and coal chutes and fuel tanks, and all kinds of stuff, so I'll take a look at it.
Okay. Hey, we have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Omenor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Just the other, really, a couple months ago, you told us to finish up some work with the capital improvement software. We'll be able to show you that probably next month, we've got everything into your web-based capital improvement plan software. It's, the intent is to have a usable system, so you guys can look at city needs, understand, you know, what the big picture is of things. But, my hope is that we can bring it up and kind of flash through that next month. The last thing I have is just, we met just, just an hour ago with city staff, there's always little things that come up, you know? So, when I provide that engineer's report for you with the assessment this year, I'll probably brush up some of these little cost estimates that we have for you guys, some little things. If you're gonna do a project next year, do you want to consider doing some of these spot repairs that we found during the televising? Or, there's some panel replacements on the, the concrete shared use trail that kind of goes around the city. There's a few really bad spots, and there's some storm, one or two storm inlets on Main Street that are, there's starting to be a little sinkhole next to them. Just some little piddly things, so my intent is to provide you the cost estimate, and then if we're gonna go through the process of bidding and building a project, I want you to have some, it's not gonna be any of these big capital improvement plan projects, but there's a handful of nitpicky things that I think you guys should consider at the same time.
Good. That's all I got?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions, Jared?
Yeah.
Thank you guys. Six A, street closure request for Harvest Fest. Yes, you're right, and just talked about it, and resolutions to create a district for alley repair and district preparation for engineers' report and estimate.
There is a district based on the entire block. And that would be similar to what we did with West River to alley, and include the entire block.
So like Dan said, are we gonna get kickback from people on the north side of that block? If we don't go up that alley?
Very possible, same way you had comments on the south side and up there, where the tee went through. When we received comments on that, on the previous project there, Monty, did we put them in touch with the special, the, the leadership of the special assessment group to get some ideas as to how they might look at it?
Yeah, they'll be having another public hearing as far as once they determine the benefit to every property owner and are proposing their assessment, so there'll be another public meeting for them to actually visit directly with those property owners as to what they're doing. We did give them a little, yes, guidance as to the fact that we didn't think there was any benefit from this board, but it was still all in their hands at all.
And, and does that occur prior to the property owner's opportunity to opt out? Or is that after?
That, well, the protest period has already been done, and there wasn't enough property owners that owned the square footage to protest it out, so now it'll just be a matter of the special assessment board determining the benefit, and then having an hearing.
Thoughts? Concerns?
Well, we have precedence in that, and that's, that's one of the things I always like to see us, and to do the best we can to be consistent as to how we're defining these things from project to project.
Exactly. We need a motion to use that as our district boundaries.
Yes.
So...
And motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Omenor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And there's one more, basically, through the law of task order 15, directing engineer to prepare his report and cost estimate now that you've created the district. So what was, what was my motion I did when, when Jared was up discussing? I was to approve the task order with them, the contract with them for them.
It was a task order motion, oh. Task order number, he ordered, task order number 15.
It was like deja vu, I already had something. So I'll, I'll go ahead and make that, that motion to move forward with this.
Thank you. Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar?
Aye.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Omenor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Now moving down to request to citizens, six A, three closure requests for Harvest Fest, which is in about three weeks, two weeks.
Basically, from the time shortly after the parade until it dances over at midnight, they would close Main Street from Union State to IBEW.
There's no special requests on this that impact Dave and his staff, is there?
No.
Just barricades? Then just providing the barricades and the ends?
Okay.
And probably the, about the next day, the streets sweep are following.
We're gonna ask, we've already agreed as well to work on that.
Yep, yep.
Make a motion to approve it?
Please.
I'll second it.
Motion by Weidrich. Second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Alright, thank you. Local permit for raffle for S&amp;G LLC.
You're proposing to do raffles, he's only gonna do one now before the end of the year. Basically, over the Harvest Fest weekend, he's trying to raise funds to get a new projector for the theater. My only concern with this, and it's obviously up to you, is it's, these permits are for civic-minded purposes, so if you consider this civic-minded, or civic-oriented. It might be a little bit of a stretch, but I know that the, we, we've made some donations on behalf of HGC.
I think even the free movies and stuff like that, I think you could pigeonhole it a little bit that way. It's not a perfect fit, but I guess it's close enough that I think I'd be okay with it in that respect.
That's good enough for me.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pillar. Second, second move by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Alright. Building permit with variance, or Mr. Getz?
Yeah, Mr. Getz is proposing to build an addition onto their property, a new garage. Basically, the variance would be for approximately a foot, less than two feet on the front. He's in the R1, so he requires a 30-foot setback from the property line. He is currently 43 feet to his old thing, with his old house garage, which is approx, which is at the 30 feet. This one would end up being one foot closer, because of, the entryway would extend one foot in, so that's why he's looking for the one-foot variance on the front. Here's where his house entry is now, and here's where the new garage is proposed to be. To me, it looks closer to two feet, but, so that's why I said it'd be either a one-to-two foot variance. Make a motion to approve the variance.
Motion by Weidrich. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Omenor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Alright, water and sewer?
Nothing at this time.
David, anything with streets?
Uh, we got most of the crosswalks painted that we wanted to do, we got a few more, uh, we got some paint left over, so we're gonna keep going, we have to walk around by the school and everything down Main Street. We'll leave off third and fourth, I don't know, we have some paint left over, so we're just gonna keep packing some more of the faded ones for the permitting with rain and stuff. And I don't know if Monty passed out some pricing or whatever on different lawn mowers?
No, I didn't. I figured we'll wait until Jason's here.
Jason is here for that, okay.
Any else?
Nope.
Okay, thanks, David.
Question, Dave? Did we ever get that blade over to free?
What that?
Did we ever get that snow blade over to free to get those cracks?
Still waiting for the, the estimate from him. Can't talk to him last week again, or whatever, this morning I talked to him, he's still working on his, being repriced for that.
Casey? Find us, listen. There aren't anything this time. Mr. Weidrich? Please, Fire Force?
Hi, do you not have anything for that?
Buster?
We're gonna take the pass.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to make comment about Chalk Fest. I don't know if you, if you had opportunity to be down there, but I was there both Thursday and Friday evenings, I'm sorry, Wednesday and Thursday evenings, and, and drove a little bit, but it was, I thought it was fantastic. We had great turnouts, the weather was a little breezy on the first day, but the turnouts were awesome. I just, to see a lot of the people that, there that you don't recognize, out-of-town people, and that's one of the main goals for that, is to, you know, bring people to our community and, and obviously showcase some art. It's fantastic, I had a great time. If you get an opportunity, if you're heading down Main Street, look on the side of the building, beside the newspaper building, that mural is awesome, really nice, a nice addition, so kudos to that group for putting that on.
I don't know if Laura got you the statistics on that or not, but she said that 49% of the people that attended were from outside of Hazen, 21 different states were present for it, which shocked me, in two different countries, which, it's like, it's kind of caught me off guard by that one.
Yeah, they had a board up where you could put a pin where you're from, yeah, around the country. It's cool. Alright, moving down to 11A, Old Business, valley got a repair on 7th Street near East Lutheran.
I'm pretty sure this is what, you know, we're looking at.
Yeah.
Well, that one you had me check out a while back.
Yeah, it sunk with about three inches, right at the seam where the weeds are at. It doesn't, it's not very evident on this, these photos, but, I don't know, it, it's not necessary, but it's only gonna get worse, and maybe next year, that could be something we look at with the bunch of the other projects that Jared's talking about, but in the last year, this has sunk three inches. I don't know why, what settling is occurring there, or what's going on underneath there, but it's something that we need to pay attention to.
Do we still get flow completely on there, or does it settle out and sit?
No, it flows pretty good there, I looked at that one of the last rain, we, or last week in the rain, and it flows pretty decent. So it's just, I don't know. I was just curious, the price of this, it seems, I mean, it seems, I mean, low, I was like, I was curious, if you could just do it now, that place, and remind me the price, carry on with the list.
13?
Is that 13 or 12, or something? Oh. Is that to cut it out and replace just that one section, Monty, or?
Yes.
Now, I don't know, it's a small one here. What kind, what kind of timeframe could they get it done in? I mean, we got school starting shortly here, and that's presumably, I, I don't know, maybe that's not one of the main routes for some of the buses coming in and out of the school?
A hundred bucks, it might go across, or if you want, the city bus.
Yeah, because the buses come in from the last...
They come in?
Or from the east. Or from the east, and then they go down between the schools now. You're right, Casey, I forgot that that price tag is like that. And I think that is, too, maybe about to be in there, maybe next year it could be two, three, four, five hundred dollars more.
It's a fixed, fixed price contract with them?
So, no. No, no, exactly, so, so this would be now.
That's just his estimate, yeah.
Okay, but right now though, right now that bid is just a slump, some bid, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, probably good for now.
So that, that was my question. If we move forward here, that's all it's gonna cost us, is thirteen seventy-five?
Right, if we want, I thought you meant, when you said fix, like, next spring, the same pricing.
Okay. Make a motion to replace that section of gutter?
Okay, we have a motion by Weidrich. Second, second by Stern, discussion.
Is this something that, according to my experience, that he can get done before we get into snow and stuff? Yeah, they'll get it done before snow lands down there. Okay, excellent.
Hey, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Peller.
Aye.
Omenauer.
Aye. Motion carried. Now this next one, I think is cheap. Shop roof repair estimate.
So how many panels do you have to set up right now?
Another one, it gets pretty wet in there a few spots.
Like I said, that roof has been out there since the early eighties?
Uh, since it was constructed in the late seventies, early eighties, yeah.
It actually got worse after that last big wind that we had, or whatever, probably loosened some of the panels or whatever. Goes nail down?
No.
Oh, they're screwed.
Screwed, yeah. But Matt told me that, well, even the washers, they're rusting underneath it. It just, it's popping right over the top of the washers and it's just rusting as well, so. Yeah, it's not, not good. So the total bill is in like, the bill's like in like thirty-five or something, is it?
Uh, twenty-seven, one fifty-six. But I see the word base bid. So that's, that's leaving, leaving it open that it could be more than that, or?
When I asked Matt about that too, he said, when they take the metal off, if any of the cross members underneath are rusting at the endpoints where it's, so then.
Here's what I found.
Fair enough.
Wouldn't that be?
Sorry, panel off already looked?
Yeah, so that's a possibility, so.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, we have a motion?
No.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Can you find us any money, Jared?
Roof repairs, no. I mean, you could apply for a community development block now, but you don't apply or qualify for it.
Yeah. It's jammed. And after this amount of time, I know nothing on insurance, probably.
I think it's necessary and we need to do it.
Make a motion to replace the roof.
Thank you, motion by Weidrich. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. So this project, then I guess I start then soon?
Says a month to get the material. Then I, I would assume they would carry on then, once the material arrives, Monty?
Yeah, that was my understanding, once they have the materials, they would start pending to get out their other projects and finish them.
We have a motion, a second, number discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Peller.
Aye.
Omenauer.
Aye, motion carried. All right, New Business, appointing alternate municipal judge.
It was brought to my attention that when you approved your appointment of Mr. Krebsbach, who is, who is the municipal judge in Max back in two thousand eighteen, we had actually put a term on it, so four years, so it actually expired last year. And so Judge Stern is still requesting to use Mr. Krebsbach as the alternate judge in case he has to recuse himself for many cases.
So see, are we looking for an extension for an additional four years, or?
I left this open-ended until somebody else is qualified and requested to serve, depending on what happens with the judgeship in the future.
Okay, we need a motion for this appointment.
So moved.
Motion by Peller. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Peller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Omenauer.
Aye, motion carried. All right, twelve B, September fourth meeting is on Monday of Labor Day weekend. The, we wanna move it to the fifth, Tuesday the fifth.
I think we kind of set precedent again, the last several holidays, if that happened, we moved all of them to the Tuesday, so. I'm good with it. I think, I think our city employees.
I'll be able to make this that one Tuesday.
But you live on.
I hope.
I'm good on Monday.
You need to bring that.
I think the cat will be in Colorado, it would still be up in Alaska.
I can make it, I can make it. I feel a part, I don't, I don't particularly care to align city folks if they're off for the day holiday to come back in the evening for meetings, so.
Well, I can't make either day because I'm on swing shift. I work three to eleven, all those days.
Cover for you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
As long as Jason can make it. If he can't make it, we won't have all of them.
You have three. Okay, I'll make it, yeah, okay. I won't be able to make it on Tuesday, or I'll be able to make it next Wednesday. Wednesday, whenever. Well, it's, it's tentatively set up for the, the Tuesday the fifth and we'll talk to Mr. Hack, can't make sure he can be here. All right, thirteen, public comment. Over here, mine. And fourteen, approval of bills.
Motion to approve bills is presented.
Motion by Weidrich.
Aye.
Second by Peller. Discussion. Roll call. Oh, sorry, go ahead. So I just had, I had one, I guess, for this John Reed bill. It was like investigation services.
Training, it's a training for one of the officers.
So did we complete then the, the backflow preventers on the, the businesses?
I do.
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
We have a motion, the second, roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Peller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenauer.
Aye, motion carried. Meager, thank you guys.
Just bear with.